Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, uh, monthly meeting of Council. Mayor Lowe is not here tonight, and I am taking your place, and we'll try to do a dutiful job for her. Uh, and with that being said, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Humphries.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Lowe is absent.
Very good. Thank you very much. Uh, pledge allegiance will be led by Bob Howard tonight.
Please join me in the pledge, there are flags.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move right into the approval of minutes. Council, is there any minutes that, do you want to do these separately, or do you, or will together be fine?
Um, if you have any preference.
Well, you've got to check.
Yeah, I just have, let's, we could do them separately, I guess, if that's okay with you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. All right. That sounds fine. So we'll start with the February meeting, February the 12th, special called meeting.
Yes, sir. There's a change, um, if you don't mind.
In the February meeting?
In the February 12th, special called meeting.
Very good.
Um, there was, um, a motion made by, you want me to just read, I guess I could start there, and then I'll just read this whole paragraph right there.
Whatever you like.
Okay. A motion was ma- made by Mr. Humphries, seconded by Mr. Howard, to retain Bob Ward Esquire to represent the council in a FOIA matter pending in the Washington County Circuit Court, as Mark Flynn Esquire had resigned from the case when he accepted a cabinet position with the government and authorized the town manager to pay fees for said representation from the general funds. Um, Ms. Patterson questioned whether Deb Eisenhower appeared as co-counsel with Mr. Flynn in this matter. Ms. Patterson stated that she did not receive information either from Ms. Eisenhower, that she has withdrawn her position as co-counsel. Mr. Kelly stated that Ms. Eisenhower was acting as co-counsel. Wait a minute, yeah, that's right. Mr. Kelly stated that Ms. Eisenhower was acting as co-counsel, as she was a named defendant. I think that should probably read, that she should not.
Yes, that's correct.
Should not. Okay, let me read that over again. Mr. Kelly stated that Ms. Eisenhower was not acting as co-counsel, as she was named defendant, and that she has retained separate counsel. Ms. Patterson stated that she apologized that she was incorrect, however, that is what was said during the hearing. Ms. Patterson stated that Ms. Eisenhower went into the judge's chambers and listened to all information, the judge, Mr. Proctor, and Mr. Flynn presented, and that she was representing herself verbally as co-counsel. Ms. Patterson stated that she did not understand how that transpired, and there was no withdrawal. In other words, there was no withdrawal to the motion, or a motion to withdraw in the court. Mr. Kelly again stated that Ms. Eisenhower never indicated that she was co-counsel, and he said he would have, it certainly advised her not to do so, since she was named a defendant in this case. And that video is six, um, six dot twenty-three through seven dot, or semicolon if you will, forty-six. And please note that in the record, that those minutes should be changed to this.
Any other corrections or additions to this? Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll move this, the minutes be approved, just corrected.
My second's out.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
And Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Rick, I don't think there are any changes there, the rest of them, we can do them all together if you want.
I think Bob Howard, we can do them all together, I think Bob might have one change. Mr. Howard?
I just had one change, it was on the, I think, the last...
The twentieth?
Twentieth of March. It just, it didn't have your name on there, just said Mayor Lowe, then had Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Your name was not on there as, as any comments. Other than that, I didn't see.
I caught it, I think it was something with, the way it was...
It said, uh, yeah, I think you're right.
All right, very good. Are there any other corrections or additions to the balance of the minutes?
Not that I know of.
Council, what's your pleasure on this?
I'll go ahead and recommend, or make a motion that the other four sets be approved as they presented.
And this one with the cor- with the corrections?
With the correction, on the twentieth.
My second. Okay, motion second, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
All right, moving right along, we'll have, we have the public comments. Before I start this, I will remind everybody, if they would, to please cut off your cellphones, um, or as Ed Moore used to say, put them on stun, and, uh, and at this time, the council will hear public comments, from those citizens registered to speak. Please come forward to the podium as your name is called, restate your name, state your address, identify any organization you might represent. Each speaker will have three minutes for comments. Each speaker will be timed by the town clerk once your comments begin, and will be given a cue when one minute of speaking time remains. Speakers are reminded that neither council members or staff will address questions or otherwise engage with speakers during the public comment period. And, uh, do you have the, it's right here, okay, another machine?
Yes.
Looks like we only have one person that's on the comment sheet, and that is Jim Moore. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
We've got one other individual that didn't get to sign that would like to be on the list.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jim Moore, 133 College Street. I'd like to get a few things straight. Uh, over the past several years, we have donated to the town, uh, the historic Fairview log home site, uh, in several acres. It's a gift to the town and the citizens of the town. In addition to that, we signed over ten years ago, a lease on an additional twenty acres of land, ten-year terms, renewable, at discretion only of the town, uh, for a total of fifty years, one dollar per ten years, and we agreed to give the dollar back, which we did. So in essence, the town had twenty acres for free for fifty years. The, we had no right to renew or terminate the lease, according to the clauses and terms of that lease, only the town had the right to renew or terminate the lease, if they notified us in writing appropriately and timely. That was not done, therefore, the lease terminated, out of our control. As the Park Street open house at the fire station last month, Mr. Humphries stated that that was a fireable defense. In spite of the fact that the town dropped the ball, we notified the town in writing that we were agreeable, due to our dedication to the town and historic properties, especially Fairview, to work out another lease. Still willing to do that. In spite of that, rumors are being spread that, due to the lack of a lease, we are taking back our gift of the historic Fairview homestead and properties. Totally ridiculous, false, malicious act. This needs to be stopped, is morally wrong to condone such rumor and to allow it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Stephen Jett.
Um, excuse me. In light of the fact, I'm not sure whether there's going to be a future public hearing on the issue of the bow hunting, uh, I thought I'd make a statement on that at this time. This is on my behalf and on that of my wife, Lisa Roberts Jett. Owing to the elimination of predators such as cougars and wolves, the deer population now exceeds sustainable limits. Deer consume crops, can carry disease, and can be road hazards. Therefore, we do not oppose appropriately regulated hunting in rural areas. However, we feel that that activity should be confined to the unurbanized county, which would take, which would continue to supply replacement deer if hunting came to be undertaken in the municipality. Much militates against the proposal to have bow hunts in population, populated residential and commercial Abingdon, and many questions remain unanswered, unresolved. What evidence is there that urban bow hunting succeeds in significantly lowering deer populations long-term? Do we want our small-town beauty to be diminished by deer hunting stands popping up here and there? Would young children become unwilling witnesses to the killing or wounding, even field butchering of beautiful and innocuous animals before their eyes? How would Abingdon's visitors react to such a scene? What if a wounded deer were to flee to a property on which no permission to hunt has been, has been, or will be given? Are that property's residents obliged to deal with the agonies of a maimed or dying deer on their doorstep if they choose not to let the hunter under their land to dispatch the animal? What happens to that buck if the landowners are away and cannot accord permission? The consequences of the hunt cannot be confined to participating properties, and can negatively impact nearby, non-participating residences and businesses. It has been suggested that the venison could be used to feed the hungry. How would meat inspection statutes be adhered to? What mechanism would be established to distribute the meat? Who would pay for all that? Yes, deer nibble on our garden plants. At least some of us feel compensated by these animals' wild beauty. In any case, before considering hunting, we should look at workable, bloodless deer control alternatives. These include prohibition of putting out feed for deer, use of net and other fencing, planting known deterrent plants around gardens, and use of ultrasonic and olfactory repellents. The last can be prepared at home or be purchased. A brand-new and also effective, if expensive, municipal approach is immun contraception, which involves tranquilizing and injecting dose every two years. We urge rejection of urban bow hunting in favor of the alternatives mentioned. Thank you.
Stephen, and not to answer back on this, I will tell you that there is a, a presentation coming up by that Urban Archery Deer Hunting Program, and Dr. David Calb and Nelson LaFond, the Deer Project Coordinator for Virginia Game and Island Fisheries, will be doing a presentation, if anybody wants to hang around for that, a little later on, so. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Jett. And the next person is Nan Harmon.
I'm Nan Harmon, 498 Greenspring Road in Abingdon, and after Dr. Jett's, uh, talk, I don't know really what I have to say, I, I just saw this on the, um, the agenda, and I was, I was not able to make it last month, so I don't know if you all talked about it last month, but I just had my two cents. Um, of course, most of you know where I live, right there at, um, 498 Greenspring Road, and before the development started, the construction, we had probably thirty-some deer, and they would just go from my wood, my farm, and over to the meadows, and they just had their territory, and they would come and go. But since that has started, I've seen, we're down to about a group of six, and they go to just a little patch of woods behind Magic Mart and just around. So I haven't really seen, well, and then I thought, well, maybe they've gone to town. I mean, that, maybe they've gone into the town, because they could certainly get on the creeper trail and go into the knobs, but, um, about a year and a half ago, well, actually, it was on Thanksgiving morning, I heard this loud crack, a high-powered rifle crack, and I said, well, it came from the meadows. So we went around and, uh, found a tree stand, we called the police, and I called the, um, not the fishing game, but who do you call? Anyway, I called those people, and they came out and found a tree stand in, on the meadows, and of course, they're shooting, and we found some skeletons and things, that they'd been shooting in town, which was kind of worrisome. But, um, I sort of agree about shooting, uh, anything, arrows or guns, in town, but, um, I don't know about the, the urban population of deer. I'm sort of against the shooting, though. And, and one quick thing about, um, this, the rumor I heard about Dr. Moore's, uh, the Fairview Farm, I was talking with a lady on Saturday, and I mentioned, you know, the Fairview Farm, they were having a get-together up there that day, and, um, she said, well, and I said, well, you know, the Moores had donated part of the land and leased part, and she looked at me rather smugly and said, well, I heard, I've heard they've taken it back. And I went, well, um, I didn't know that, because I was at the town council meeting when, uh, Mr. Kelly said to Dr. Moore, who was in the audience, about getting the lease renewed or whatever, and Dr. Moore said, and he was sitting to my right, behind me, he said, uh, that will be fine, and that was the last I heard of it. So, that, I told the, the lady that, but, um, hopefully, that will be straightened out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nan. All right. And I think, I think that, uh, that Mayor Lowe always asks, and I'll ask also, is there anyone else that would like to speak? I know you didn't have a chance, maybe put your name on there, is there anyone else? Going? Once?
Sorry.
I guess that's it.
You had a short window.
That was a short window. Anyway, okay. If not being, not being, seeing anyone else would like to talk, we're going to move right on to our next item on the agenda, and that is petitions and public hearings. And, um, the first one we have will be a public hearing, it's going to be the first reading, uh, and then, of course, after the first reading, uh, there'll be an appointment of, of a board of viewers. Uh, there'll be three viewers appointed, they'll come back, we'll have a second reading next month, and at that time, a decision will be made on, uh, what the, uh, the disposition of this, uh, right-of-way will be. So, Matt Bolick, if you'll come up and just kind of fill us in on exactly what we're, what we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, good evening, Council. Uh, I told you before the meeting, it'll be a short report, and you pretty much stole my thunder, uh, for the whole, the whole report there. It is, uh, first reading tonight, a public hearing. After the public hearing, we'll appoint three viewers that will go out independently to look at it, and report back to the council at the next meeting. So, uh, we will appoint those, uh, as quickly as possible tomorrow, and, and keep, keep this process moving forward. Uh, Mr. Hoke is here, if anyone has any questions for him, the property owner on, uh, both sides of the potential right-of-way vacation. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. All right. That being said, I will open the public hearing for anyone to comment, either positively or negatively, and with that, the public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak about the vacation of this property? It is located at 243 Fugate Street, um, and it is a park that's wetland in the back. Anyone else, anyone like to speak? And, public hearing is closed. Uh, Council, do we need to vote on this one, Mr. Kelly, at this time, or just to appoint the board of, of, of viewers?
Just authorize the, the town staff to move forward with appointing the board of viewers.
Okay. Council, what is your pleasure on this?
I'll make a move, a, a motion that we appoint the proper, um, committee to go out and, and look at this property and, and give us their, um, input on that, please.
Very good. Second. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any? Ms. Kingsley.
Mr. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And, uh, the second piece of business under petitions and public hearings are a public hearing, first reading, and this is a consideration of an ordinance to enact Chapter 30, Article 6, Stormwater System, subsection 31, 26, dash 31, 31, and 31, 41, to 31, 43, illicit discharge and illegal connection. Uh, this is on the stormwater system. This is, my, my understanding is, uh, council members, this codifies our ordinance with what the state of Virginia is. Uh, a second reading could be dispensed with this, if you, if the motion so contains that, and it could be approved, uh, as read this first time. Now, Deborah Eisenhower, would you like to tell us anymore?
The only thing I'm going to do is pretty much give you Tyler Vensel, who will tell you pretty much what the whole thing is about. It is a mandated ordinance that, um, the state gives us the responsibility to enact, so it would be our recommendation that you do so.
Thank you. Mr. Vensel.
Good evening.
You don't come see us very often anymore.
I do not. No, good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council. Um, bear with me, I'm losing my voice. Uh, in, in August of 2014, the, the state of Virginia looked at the town of Abingdon and determined that it had enough infrastructure to consider it an, an MS4, which is a municipal separate storm sewer system. The city of Bristol is also one. Um, and so what that, that meant was, was that we had to get a permit, uh, under, from DEQ for stormwater discharge. And, and in, involved in that, there are six minimum control measures, uh, and criteria, and, and in number three, that the state requires us to do within that window, that five-year permit, so it, it actually ends, uh, June the 30th, and then there will be another five-year cycle that begins on July the 1st. Um, so Section 2B, 3B, uh, says that the operator shall effectively prohibit through ordinance or other legal mechanism, non-stormwater discharges into the storm sewer system to the extent allowable under federal, state, or local law, regulation, or ordinance. Um, this is very similar to the EPA's illicit discharge or, model ordinance, as well as, uh, we also looked at the city of Bristol's as well, and, uh, and kind of married the two. Um, this is a, um, an ordinance that will give us the, um, authority to, if there is an illicit discharge, will give us the authority to, um, regulate it, abate it, and potentially, um, incur fines for the, whoever would be discharged. Any questions?
Well, when is an illegal discharge, so the public will know?
Well, it could be, potentially, if someone tied their, their, um, their, like, sewer lateral into the storm drain, uh, or if, if they, say they may have a generator or something, and they spill over, I think it's twenty gallons of, of fuel, uh, into the creek or something, that, just anything that, uh, is considered an illicit discharge, and there are definitions within the, uh, the ordinance. Can I explain that?
And also, if you wouldn't mind to, um, no, let the public know what illegal connections would be, I know kind of what that is, but if you'll tell us more about that.
Be similar, it would be any connection to the storm drain that is not, um, that is not for stormwater use. It would, um, dump, any kind of dumping in our storm sewer, uh, 'cause the town has infrastructure, because of our, we maintain the roads, we have drop inlets and things like that. Some people like to find, uh, kind of hidden places, and, and they, they dump, dump things into our system, uh, and we have to rectify those, so we need to find a way to, to minimize that.
Okay.
Council, any other questions? Want to open up the hearing? This is a public hearing, uh, the first public hearing on the, on this reading. As I said, it will not take a second reading, if you all so wish, and the motion comes as that, in that form. The public hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak on the, um, the codification of our ordinance in line with the state ordinance for stormwater and runoff water, um, connection? Anyone? If you'll come up.
Just a question on...
If you'll come up to the, come on up to the thing.
All right, it's a quick question.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
Nan Harmon, 498 Greenspring Road. I can talk to Tyler about this as well. I just wondered if that includes, um, discharge onto other people's property, or is it just into the, the public system?
I think that's a good question. Tyler, can you answer that? Or is that, or is that a...
Well, I can, I, what this would include is into the town system. Uh, the discharge on the other properties is falls under different sections of the Virginia Code. Um, I mean, it potentially could be, if someone, I mean, it's kind of more hazardous materials, uh, like paint and waste and, uh, fuel, um, but, that's what this is, that's what this ordinance is enacting, is for kind of hazardous and, and like, say, sanitary sewer connections, illegal connections to the system.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was, you know, if you had something that went across someone else's land, then in, and then into the system, but, okay, I'll have to talk to you about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this? Yes, if you'll come on up.
Hi, Joel Levine, 340 and 350 Greenspring Road. Uh, again, just a question, uh, has the ordinance already been drafted, and is it available online that we can look at? Or are we just considering starting work on?
It's been drafted and is available in our office upstairs.
Is it online, or will it be online?
It's, it's not currently online.
Okay. Is it, is it, is it in line with the state, so you can look on it, line at the state level, or? Is this, is this, if this is a codification?
It's, it's going to basically mirror the state requirement, because it is a state mandate.
It mirrors the state model.
I don't have any other questions, I'll stop by the town hall and get a copy of it.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
It's just the time that I can, I can ask a question as well.
We're gonna, we're closing, anyway, if you don't mind. Is there any other? Anyone else? Going, going? All right. Closed the public hearing, and Council, uh, what is your wish?
I have a question.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do you want me to do that now, or wait?
Yeah, that's fine, sure, that's fine.
The question is, um, this would be for Mr. Kelly, when we have these drafts written up like this, can we put those on our website, so that the public can see this before the public hearing, so they can get as much education about what we're going to talk about in the public hearing, before they come to the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, if we have them readily available prior to the meeting, we can, we can certainly do that.
I think we'll get as much information as we can possibly get on the web for our citizens to see before hearings, I think that would be wonderful.
Anyone else? Council, who do you want to go with this?
Rick, I think since people want to look at it, uh, and make their comments, uh, maybe we should have a second reading.
Okay. So do we need to, uh, do we need to have a vote on this first reading, or just go on the second reading?
Probably the second reading.
All right. That being said, with this, uh, the public hearing's closed, and we will look at this one for next month, and a second reading. Moving right along, there are no second votes on that. We don't have to vote on that one.
No.
On second readings, we have none. Consideration of bids, none. Um, and reports from the town manager, and at this point, if we'll have Dr. David Calb, Nelson LaFond, the Deer Project Coordinator for Virginia Department of Game and Island Fisheries, are going to inform us on a much, uh, it sounds like on a much, uh, wanted fact, uh, project, talking about, one of you.
Vice Mayor, honor of council members, I'm just here to, uh, represent a local representative of the Department of Game and Fishery, and I'm going to turn up the actual presentation portion of this over to Nelson LaFond, who is the coordinator, but I will be here to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks for the invitation, I'm delighted to be here, my name is Nelson LaFond, I'm one of two Deer Project Co- statewide Deer Project coordinators for the Department of Game and Fisheries, as David mentioned, and, uh, urban deer management falls kind of under my responsibilities, and have been coordinating this program for, uh, since 2003, so for a number of years. Uh, and it looks like I can use this to advance myself, or? Try that. Oh, geez. Okay, good. Okay, so, I know you all probably have been at the meeting and heard a little about urban archery, uh, and I think this was sent to you all, so you probably have had a chance to look at it, but I'll just go through the presentation first, and then certainly after that, if you have any questions, or want me to respond to any comments that are already made earlier this evening, I'll be more than happy to. Um, so the urban archery deer season, uh, was begun in 2002, so we're sixteen years into this, and we've had, we have forty-nine localities participating through this previous season, but that's, actually needs to be updated now to 53, because we've had, we've had four more localities, uh, announced today, we joined the season, uh, beginning of 2018. Uh, basically, just so you know, the way the laws regulate, regulation is written, all, all cities and towns, and some... cities and towns, and some counties, there's a certain population density threshold eligible for the season, and they must enroll by April one, uh, via letter. Now, it's April second today, and if the council decided to make its motion this evening to participate, and we received a letter in timely fashion in the next few days, it would be fine. We've done that several times in the past, because I knew, I knew the town was considering it, so we're, we're following the spirit of the law here. Um, there's flexible local restrictions as authorized, in other words, there's ordinances that you can pass to make it more restrictive than what the regular state law is, for instance, stand heights, distance minimums, those kind of things. We'll talk more about that in a moment. Uh, really, what does it do? Urban archery season sometimes is misunderstood as some new permit system or something. It's really not. Really, all it does is extend archery seasons beyond what the normal limits are to a full seven seas, seven months. So there's an antelus deer-only portion, which is the doe segment of population, is the important one to, to take, because that's what, that's the factory that controls the deer population. So in the month of September, and then the month of January through March, during those four months total, it's antelus deer only, because this is not a trophy hunting season. This is not about hunting as much as it is controlling the problem. Uh, but then, during the regular seasons, October through December, uh, during that three-month period, you could, a hunter could take a buck or a day. So that makes the entire seven, seven months. There's no extra hunting license or permits required for the hunter. It's pretty simple, it just becomes another place they can hunt, uh, as long as they meet the requirements. There's standard bag limits, meaning the numbers here that'd be taken per day or per year, that doesn't change either. That's all, this is all, all part of what a hunter can do. Uh, checking requirements, whether it's online, through the app, or at a check station, again, that's no different. Here's the participating urban archery localities as of this past year, and it's probably important, it's much important just to look at the map for the distribution of the kind of localities that have experiences this program thus far. Uh, you can see as far as cities go, uh, there's eighteen cities, twenty-six towns, and five counties, and amongst those, you can see that we go from small towns, such as right at the road in Saltville or Independence, all the way up to Richmond, Fairfax County, Fairfax County being one of the original founding members of this program, at one point four million people, essentially without incident since two thousand and three, in this program. But just to give you a flavor, the kind of places that have been involved in this, from small, small towns, medium-sized cities, the last year is the one that had taken a long time to get in with Charlottesville, uh, but, but it's decided to join urban archery, again, without incident this past season. Um, in two thousand and thirteen, we let the members of the locality speak for themselves through a survey, and so we reached out to my contacts, who are normally someone at the police department, sometimes as a town manager, assistant town manager, whoever, and that's usually my contact, and so we surveyed them, and had them ask the people they're familiar with in the, in their town, or city, or county, about the season. So what we found out is that, from their, in their perspective, urban archery season had increased hunting pressure, and had generally been effective. Most citizens and the local staff involved were satisfied, and importantly, there have been very few incidents, and when they had, there've been minor things like tree stands on property lines, that turned out generally to be on the right side of the property line, but it's more of a question about why the tree stand was there. Certainly, some, in certain urban areas, hunting is a novel activity, and people are gonna have questions about what, what's happening here, and so not just much more about information than it is any kind of real conflict, if that makes sense. So safety statistics, uh, and this is for archery hunting generally, not just in urban archery season, okay? This is for, um, statewide. The last time we had a second party incident, and I will find that in a second, uh, in Virginia was nineteen ninety-six, so, uh, you know, twenty-two years ago, and this was in Fairfax County, and it was actually another member of the hunting party who was injured by an arrow shot by a hunter. A second party incident is when it's an innocent bystander, or somebody within the hunting party that's, that's injured. A first party incident would be when the hunter himself, or herself, is injured. And unfortunately, we have quite a few tree stand accidents, where hunters fall from tree stands, injure themselves, and in those cases, it's harm that's caused to themselves, not someone else. So the last second party incident was in nineteen ninety-six. We've had a total of five of those incidents, injuries, uh, one fatality in the sixties, uh, actually was one fatality in Patrick County by an archer who shot another person, but in all those years, we've had about five incidents. Um, and realize the background going on there, there's over seventy thousand archers hunting over seven hundred thousand days per year in Virginia. Again, this is not just in urban archery, this is statewide. And since two thousand and two, at the inception of this, there's been no safety incidents reported to our agency that we've become aware of. There's been a few incidents of arrows laying on properties that are not allowed, there's been incidents of people complaining about, uh, in some of the parks, where there's been urban park hunting, someone saw a deer being transported, and it wasn't completely covered up, so the carcass was visible to, to someone. Those kinds of reports, but not any real safety incidents. Um, National Safety Council was with all kinds of recreation, uh, based on statistical injuries, fatalities, et cetera, et cetera, considered archery hunting generally, again, not just in urban locality, but generally, safer than baseball, football, tennis, golf and swimming. So if you're considering urban archery, which at this point, it sounds like you are, um, some suggestions would be to review our urban archery webpage, uh, and I think that information was included, I believe, David, you sent that information with the package. And the reason I ask you to look at that is to look, again, at the variety of localities, and how they've addressed, and how they've added, added, uh, some additional ordinances in some places to make them feel more comfortable, or the citizens to feel more comfortable. Talk with participating localities, I mean, you've got to feed us right at the road from them, and, uh, they, talking to them gives you a perspective that I can't give you. If archery hunting is allowed, restrict it as little as possible, and what I mean by that is, there's a temptation sometimes to put in some acreage minimums, like five acres or three acres, and what you do is you render a large portion of your landscape unhonorable. What we've found is, for instance, Charlottesville has a one-half acre minimum. Uh, in a city like that, with a lot of high profile, a lot of people looking at it, okay? Uh, some cities and towns, like Richmond, have no acreage minimum. We see no more incidents, no more problems in the areas with no restrictions, as we do in the ones with a lot of restrictions, so I just want to point that out. One thing I will mention is, if you decide to do urban archery, and you send me a letter this week, we can work on those ordinances together between now and sometime later this summer. Those ordinances do not have to be completed at the time you submit your letter. All the letter has to say is, "The town of Abingdon is interested in joining the urban archery season in two thousand and eighteen," and then after that, we work together. In fact, I really like working with localities on ordinances, because there are certain things that are authorized and certain things that are not, based on deal and rule and that sort of thing, which I know you're familiar with that on all kind of issues. Um, one thing I want to mention, which the gentleman brought it before I had a chance to, and it's not anything to do with urban archery, but if you don't even consider urban archery, if you do, is consider a year-wide, a year-wide feeding ordinance. As of two thousand and sixteen, towns and cities are authorized by, uh, uh, General Assembly to prohibit feeding within their locality, and sometimes feeding can be the most, the biggest problem and the easiest problem to fix, if citizens are feeding deer. Um, we already have a model feeding ordinance, that you could just basically put your town, plug it right into the ordinance, uh, and it's based on a regulation that we've got that's from September through early January. Anywhere in the state, you cannot feed a deer during that period of time. If you join urban archery, you extend that period, because you'll hunt, you have a hunting season open until March, so from September to March, you would have no feeding allowed, okay? That's the way the reg works, because there's an open hunting season, there's no feeding. So that the other summer seasons, you could exclude hunting there as well by passing in an ordinance, so just want to give you, make you aware of that opportunity. So all I have now is questions from you, or if you want me to give you an opportunity to address anything you've heard tonight, if you want to have concerns about, or questions about, I'll be happy to. Or what comes next?
Yeah, so, well, thank you, Mr. LaFon. Counsel, any questions for Mr. LaFon?
I think the ordinances that, that we have in our packet, they're pretty varied. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I think we need to look at this a little bit more.
I think, and, 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 uh, can you address that, if you were talking about that, you know, the ordinances could be, uh, different orders to be put in? Or Greg, what, what's your thought about that?
Well, one of the things that comes to my, I, I would like to ask a question, if I, if I could first, but, um, you indicated about the permitting process being pretty much state hunting license, I suppose, but are the other localities that are involved, are they issuing separate permits as well?
There's a couple of situations where they are, and you have to be really careful. In the case of, if you have town property, you can certainly permit that any way you want, because you're the landowner. You could also require qualifications, they pass a certain down standard of efficiency, something like that, if it's on your town property. If it's on private land within your town, there's, there's less jurisdiction on what you can do, in other words, you can't require me to get an additional license, or additional permit, or any kind of proficiency type of thing. What you can do, and about, I think about a fifth of our localities now, eight or nine or ten, uh, require the landowner, or the activities occurring, to get an archery discharge permit. So therefore, they're not getting into the hunter's realm, which was clear by state law, that you, you know, localities cannot regulate that, but they're requiring the landowner themselves to get a archery discharge permit. Uh, so what that does is allow you, as a town, to say, and, you know, you're getting a charge, at least that way you know where it's occurring in your state, okay? It's sort of under, this meets our conditions, therefore, landowner, go ahead and get your hunters to come out and get your carcass.
And are all the discharges of, of shootings from elevated sites?
That, that's a common ordinance, that's not state law, but that's one that, if I was making one recommendation, I would recommend that one. And I would not say elevated stand, I would say elevated position, because I say that there's instances where, if you don't have a distance minimum from a resident, and it's your own personal residence, residence, and you have a safe back spot, sometimes the best place to shoot from don't last, is at that. It's elevated, deer are used to that, in their, in their environment. Also, the thing can be said with a safely positioned on a storage building, you know, in a location in the backyard, so you don't, I'm just, I'm just giving you some hints based on experience.
Would you, would you, would you like to, to elaborate on five that you think of, the, uh, the elevated position is, or either one of you, both of, why the elevated position is more of a, is more of a...
Well, I just think that the boundaries of residential areas in town are so close together, it's very easy for an arrow to get across one boundary line into another, unless you're shooting from an elevated site. It's still possible even from an elevated site. Um, that would be a major concern to me, based on the density of, of the town. If you were out, as you mentioned earlier, in a, a more, um, open area, like out in Washington County or something, it might be less of an issue than it would be here in part of, of the town. So, and that's one of the issues, and then another of the issues that I think I've heard from other people, from the public, has been, um, unless it's a pretty direct shot that instantaneous kill, there's possibility of an animal going into another person's property, and, and, you know, maybe a period of, I guess, it's...
Well, how, and how would you, how, how would that be handled? If it runs into someone who does not really want to have hunting on their property, how, how do you, you know, get through that?
Sure, and let me address those two things together. The first one is the, uh, the stand, you're exactly right, trajectory downward is safer for, for that's the arrows and bow, where they're not wanted, so that, that's, that's a pretty clear cut thing. As far as the, uh, a deer becoming wounded, or getting an arrow in it, and being viewed somewhere else on property where it's not wanted, or not dying immediately, or whatever, um, you never say never, and you don't want to say it's not a problem, so it can, and it does happen very infrequently. If it happened more frequently, we would hear about it, because my, my name, phone number, email is up on our website with urban archery, and I get all kind of weird questions this year from residents. About, oh, I saw somebody doing this, can they do it? I have yet to get one of those calls, or questions about someone seeing a deer on a property where it's not wanted. One thing we highly recommend, because of the density, is to work with your neighbors, so you get free approval, so if a person's out of town, and a deer does expire, gone and enjoying property, you can get permission to get it. Uh, by law, though, you are required to get, obtain landowner permission to retrieve the carcass. Um, so, um, again, every locality I've presented, all these, I'm not saying I've been all forty-nine, but this is the most common question, and I just want you to know that it does not come up frequently at all, as far as, once they're in the season, once they have hunters there, hunting there, the experience is showing that it's just not the issue. It's most common, in fact, when we were, we were developing this program, we, we borrowed from West Virginia, a lot of our staff said, my biggest concern is this is gonna make hunting look bad. We didn't want anything to make hunting look bad, because of the image issue, we don't want to start this urban program, because you're gonna be running off the property for their shots, and people are gonna see, and it's gonna be terrorizing the children, this kind of thing. It just hasn't been terrorized. So all I can tell you is based on experience, it's just not terrorized. Bow hunters are very discreet, and they're the most selective class of hunters, I mean, I can say, and so they're very careful about the distance they shoot animals, they want to make sure that they're going in a place that they can safely retrieve that animal, and in fact, because of that, they're probably not taking as many deer as we would necessarily like to sometimes, but the arrow is out of safety, which is what we all care about.
Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of counsel, my, my thoughts of this is, because the ordinances that we currently have in existence, that you can't discharge firearm, or projectile, for that matter, in the town, is that it's certainly something that, um, and, and I do recognize, we do have a problem with deer in, in the town of Abingdon, but some people like to see the deer, as Mr. Jet has indicated in his comments earlier, and there's this possibility of these, um, anti-feeding programs and stuff like that. I, I think that it would serve counsel well to have a work session at some point in time, sit down and talk about all the different possibilities that exist for this problem, but to be up against the gun today to enact the ordinance, I don't think it's, or not to enact the ordinance, but to give the go-ahead, I don't think is prudent. I think that you need to spend more time and have maybe even further input from the public than what we've had here, um, tonight.
Greg, I agree with input from the folks, because I, I'll tell you something, we've talked about a problem, and I haven't heard anything about a problem. So I'd like to know the nature of the problem. We had, we had, Wayne, we had, not several people, we had, we had, several, we had a letter that we read, there were several people had called in about the deer, about deer eating their shrubs and different things like that. I don't know, I thought it was since you were on council, it might have been before you were on council. We had, yeah, we had several. Of course, I, I may not have remembered it. I don't know, I believe, I, I think you'd remember it.
I'm a, as a, as a local person here from the Department of Games, I actually get a lot of phone calls from folks from the local area, call our regional office. They get transferred to me with their deer concerns and their deer issues, and I get several calls every year from people who are in the town of Abingdon, who are concerned about the number of deer and the problems that deer are causing. And generally, for the last two years, what I've suggested is, please call your town council, call your mayor, let them know that there, we have a program that's already stated, that this is something that you can do, and apparently, this was the first time that ever came to your attention, but it, this has been a constant suggestion for me through the last two years of dealing with these issues, and often, people will get suggestions from me about, well, scaring them away, and trying to take other methods, but this is by far the best method to handle the situation more long-term. Any other questions?
I have a question, and I don't know if I can answer, ask this question to Mr. McMullin, but you had presented this to us last month, is, is it appropriate that I can ask a question? I don't want to do anything wrong here. But you, you had presented that to us last month, and I just wondered if it was your neighborhood, or if it was just your, your sights on the deer, could you kind of elaborate or expand on that for us, please?
Sure.
And what area do you live?
My name is Tom McMullin, on a two sixty-seven Whitesmills Road. Um, it really is the entire Walden Road to Whitesmills, to Barter, up on top of the barter, where all the barter folks are, that whole area, there's a lot of deer. I'm crossing Whitesmills all the time. Um, I have a friend, Sam Wheeling, he's a Realtor, I'm not sure if anybody knows him. He was gonna be here tonight, he just ran into his ear, like down on, um, on Walden Road, essentially, and he's got two thousand dollars' worth of damage to the front of his grill. And for the last two mornings, my sons and I have seen a lame deer up on the hill. Um, I don't know if it's a sane deer or not, but, um, I've lived in our house for eighteen years now, and we've seen deer up on the top of the hill there, above Bird and Easys House, um, you know, two, three, four, five deer, six deer. In the last couple of years, it's gone to a dozen deer, to seventeen, eighteen deer. First day of school this year, my boys and I were sitting on the porch, waiting for buses, we watched a whole herd of deer cross Whitesmills about a half block from Valley Street.
Did I remember correctly that they were eating some of your foliage?
Yeah, there's, um, that, that's just something that I do with my family, we try to be self-sufficient, and try to raise as much food as we can, so I have a lot put onto just, um, point six-two acre that we own, and it's been, I've been putting up more and more barriers, I've got dogs, I've got fences. The last couple of years, the primary doe that runs the entire herd has figured out how to hop over a couple of fences, and then jump into my lower yard, and was eating all my tomato plants. And typically, I'll grow, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty tomato plants every year, because we, I say we grow a lot of our own food. Last year, they were jumping into my upper backyard, and, um, they were eating my mulberry tree, my apple tree, they chopped off one of my blueberry bushes, and all the way to the ground. I planted a, a pot of sweet potatoes and got zero from it, because they kept coming back to eat those. Um, it's just, it's just been very frustrating, and I literally have all these fences, dogs, I go out every night with a flashlight, walking around. around. I've got lots of sticks on my fences to try to make more of a barrier. I even put up bird netting around, which that actually deterred them enough that they didn't get in much the second part of the summer, but by then the damage was done. It's just been, the numbers have gotten pretty ridiculous, to my viewpoint.
And there's a lot of woods out in Whitesmell, and that's where their habitat is.
Well, there's that one acre that the Barter Foundation owes, and that strip that goes all the way north there. I don't know if it's the same herd that just does the rounds, but if you want to see a deer right now, just go out on Walden Road and, you know, just leave, go around the south of town limits, and you'll see them all over the place. And like, so that Sam Wheeling lives right down the road from there, and that's where you actually hit them. I don't know. Yes, we have a lot of deer up in South Dakota, too. Oh, yeah. We have deer. Do you remember, did Sam call you all about his deer strike, like a week or two ago? Not sure, okay. Yeah, I know, he said he called the police and basically said where it was done, but I don't know if anything happened beyond that. Sam could see her tonight, his wife's out of town, he's got four kids, so he's juggling kids.
I just wanted to get that on record and to make sure that I understood you correctly, and how many people are, you know, having problems with deer and things of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, I know Bernard Neese, neighbor two houses up from me, he always gardened for years and years and years. And about five years ago, he just quit. He's like, that's it, I can't do it anymore. The deer take everything.
Well, there is community gardens, I don't know if this will help you or not, but we're in Fairview, and maybe with the traffic, you know, that'll help, and I think that's a good project, but anyway, and I'm, I mean, I feel your pain, and I also feel the deer pain.
I think they're laughing because I'm on Sustain Abingdon, I have to create community gardens. But that's something that the people on Sustain Abingdon and Rick Stasser and others are concerned, because that's the biggest concern, is, well, what about the groundhog? What about the deer? Because there were deer last year that were.
I have plenty of groundhog, and I wish we could do something with the groundhog, because that's even detrimental to livestock.
Groundhog, you can live catch and cart away. For the deer, you can't live catch a deer, really. So, there's definitely a lot of deer tracks out of Fairview.
And there is contraceptive, you know, there are different ways that we can maybe manage this population and see, I think we all need to sit down with a workshop, as Mr. Kelly stated, and do this as a public venture, and see how we can help everybody out.
Yeah, the main impact that'll have is we won't be able to do any hunting for another year and a half, then. All right. Any other questions for me?
Good luck with your gardening.
And thank you for your service on Sustain Abingdon. So, I think that's it.
Okay, I would clarify one thing, too, is if you don't do urban archery today, you could still do hunting during the October, the December period.
Sure.
And then decide to do the urban archery season in the future. Whichever way you all decide, we're going to be here to work with, you know, David's local, I'll come back down if need be, if we have a work session, if we need data, if we need to ingest more kind of data to get to help inform your decision, anything like that. But as far as actually sustainable control of populations, it would be some lethal option, whether it's hunting or sharp shooting, issues with kill permit, that sort of thing.
So let me, I'm trying to gather all this information you're telling me. So, we actually could move to send a letter asking for the extended season and the in-town kill permit. We could submit the letter, but actually not do that until we had a workshop. I mean, submit the letter saying that we were interested in it, is what you mentioned.
Well, no, the seeds of the urban archery season, in order for it to start in September this year, to get into the season, you would have to, we'd have to get that letter this week.
Okay, I mean, if you had the letter saying we were interested in it, and then we decided we weren't, can we submit a letter that?
The reason we have, the reason we have that deadline is from our hunting law digest, which is in print, essentially in the printers now. And we have a few more days, potentially a week, to finalize the name of towns that are going to be participating. So that's the only reason we have this deadline. What I was referring to, if between now and October, you change your ordinance and allow hunting, we don't need a letter that says you want to hunt during October to early January, during the regular postseason, farm season, and even though it's called the general farm season, you can restrict it to archery only. That's essentially what these localities are doing from October to early January. That's not urban archery, anyway, that's just a regular season. There's nothing to keep any city or town from doing that without even getting our permission or announcing it. We just need to know when you change your ordinances, so we can, with no harm. So that is a kind of an in-between compromise option, if you decide to go that route. But it would give some relief to people that might want this fall.
I wanted to clarify something I was finishing up with Mr. McMullin. And I said, you know, I do feel for you and the gardening and everybody else, and I've had damage done to my property as well, but I'll let it go myself, because I can. But I feel real compassionate about the way the deer are killed, as well. And the archery, sometimes I worry about that shot that doesn't kill them right off. And if it was going to be, I want to be as humane about any of this as I possibly can. And I'm not saying right now that I'm for it, against it, or whatever, I just, right now, we need more information, and again, we'll do that. But that was clarity. I feel the deer, you know, I'm passionate about animals, I love animals, but, you know, I've had deer before, it tastes pretty good, but don't hold that against me, don't hold that against me.
Again, this is data we can provide as we go forward, but modern archery equipment, you know, whether it's crossbows or compound bows that hunters use, that all hunters use now, the recovery rate that lethal arches maintenance is so much better, it's so much stuff you breed, and for, you know, thirty percent loss and this kind of stuff. So, before you worry too much about archery, but we do have, we have more updated stats that might be helpful to make that decision.
Thank you very much, thank you all for coming, this is very informative. So, that being said, council, you had heard what the town manager, Kelly, had suggested, you all have one of your thoughts on this.
I agree with the work session.
I agree with the work session.
We'll try to plan one of those in the upcoming months, and have that, and maybe figure out the topics for discussion.
Sounds like the new council's going to have some things to think about, so. All righty. That being said, we'll move right along to the great Kevin Signe. The Swami Kevin. Kevin graces every year with his harvest report, and so we look forward to that every year, and thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of town council, it's always an honor to get to spend a couple of minutes here with you. I have to admit that there's a couple of people who shall remain named, who would like Ms. Kingsley to activate that three-minute button on me, but we'll see what we can do.
And turn the light on. And a little cooler.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. You can turn this off, and there's no problem, Tony will say that I could just give it from back there on the back row. So, anyway, just want to give you all an update on how the trees are looking here in town, which I do think is kind of interesting, right after our last discussion here, since the last time I've been able to get up and stand before you. Highlights from this past year, of course, the big one is always our Tree City USA status. We are at sixteen years here now. We had our Arbor Day celebration at Abingdon Elementary, Mr. Madison, you were there, very grateful for that. Had an excellent time there. It's always good to be able to get out and spend time with the kids and teach them some proper tree planting techniques, and so it was a great event, and we always look forward to doing that in the future. Other things, we've been able to do with a number of places where we've had major tree plantings. Over at the Coombs Rec Center, we are planting trees around the new playground extension up there. We're still in the process, we've got some trees in, we've got more to come as they arrive, but that's going on. Work in conjunction with Jennifer and Alicia, and all the people over there at the Coombs Center, and that's going off well. At the muster grounds, there's a riparian barrier down there, working with the Virginia Trees for Clean Water Grant, that's gone off very well. We're still in the process of getting all the bills paid for that, but I've been talking to the Department of Forestry, and we're still in good shape with that, so, but that's going on very well. We've even been able to add some more trees, even after the initial plantings were done last year. Over in Veterans Park, we've got some more trees in. For this coming spring, we've got a pignut hickory that we'll be using as a memorial tree, as well as a couple of pawpaw trees. So, we've got those going. We've got our community orchard in, I told you all about this last year, over on A Street, we've got ten apple trees in there. I do tell you, we don't have a budget for a tree stand adjacent to this, just yet, but we may need it. But we've got those trees in, and we got them in this past week, they finally came into spring, and so they're all looking very well. We've got good native disease-resistant species, and so they're all looking very good. As well as, we've got a number of different spots here along the streets where we've had openings, where the trees we've had to take down, we've got trees coming back in there. We've also worked on our Abingdon Tree Initiative Phase Five, which is the final phase, to be able, where we've covered the entire town. We've got the invitations out to over four hundred properties throughout that area, and we got those out at the beginning of the month, we're already starting to get some responses on those, which is good. And so that's always, we're always grateful for that, because that's how we're going to be able to increase our urban tree canopy. The Emerald Ash Bor, I'm afraid to say is probably here. I believe I have found it in areas in Washington County, in the town, and over in Smith County. We are working to continue with the monitoring and detection, to find out exactly where this is. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, I'll be going through Washington County and Smith County with the Emerald Ash Bor Coordinator for the State of Virginia, and we'll be setting out some traps. Some of the traps will be here in town, so, over at the Coombs Center and up on Bradley Street. So we'll be doing that, and I do want to make you aware that the Department of Forestry has initiated a cost-sharing program for this, for not only for individual landowners, but for municipalities, where if the trees are, you know, they have to come in and approve the trees, and it is a fifty-fifty cost share on the material to get the, to get trees treated, to inoculate them. But, of course, we have already done that with a number of our large ash trees here in town, so we're in pretty good shape, but that's still, you know, we'll have to eventually get to that. Had a number of speaking engagements, Washington County Master Gardeners, seems to be a yearly thing within, which I'm glad to do, up in Blacksburg, the Departments of Forestry and Horticulture, Hunger Mother State Park, and just the other week, I was down in Steel Creek Park with the Bristol, Tennessee Treekeepers. Continued association with the Town of Marion, the Trees Virginia Board of Directors, Midland Chapter of ISA, Virginia Big Tree Program, and of course, I'm always open to anybody that calls in and has a tree concern there on their property. Goals and objectives for this coming year, of course, Tree City USA, we want to continue that, the Tree Commission, one of the things we'll be looking at is how do we revamp, how do we want to tweak the Abingdon Tree Initiative, even make it even more attractive to the residents out here, so we can get a better, to increase our urban tree canopy. We want to plant more, site-appropriate trees where available, both on the streets and wherever we need to. We want to monitor all of our new plantings at the Coombs Center and Veterans Park, and also at the muster grounds. You know, it's been very wet over there at the muster grounds, and so, you know, we need to keep a tight eye on it. I think we've probably lost a couple already, just because it's so wet over there, and so we'll keep an eye on that. Would like to expand our community orchard, if at all possible. I've already talked to Leanne about maybe putting in a little place up there on the hill, back up there behind the interpretive center, back up in there, where we might be able to have another orchard up there, and apparently that's being considered. Our continued association with the Virginia Big Tree Program, Trees Virginia, ISA, and the Town of Marion, to be able to be available. So, to get into the synopsis, I'm willing to entertain any questions from you all or anybody out here in the audience. Oh, what have we got here? We've got black gum, and we've got red buckeye, I think we've got something else, it's lacking me. Patterson, I cannot remember, we've got three different types of trees. And then we want to have a couple of deep trees giveaway, with the raffle.
We did last year. And I'd like to encourage everybody to come out and get your trees.
Oh, yes.
And tell everybody in the town about it, because you can come get free trees and plant those trees, we need the trees.
And I only know that it's good that, you know, it's just, it's not just the Earth Day, it's not just for the town, but it's, you know, everybody in that area.
It is.
I do want to make sure y'all are aware of our Arbor Day celebration for this year. It is at Watauga Elementary School, remember, we always kind of rotate around, it's going to be Friday, April twentieth, at one fifteen in the afternoon. And we'd love to have Anya and all of you guys to come out and join us and be a part of that, it's going to be a lot of fun. And I can certainly use all the help I can get out there, this voice only carries with so much, and we've got a bunch of screaming kids around, and so, we do what I can, but I try to, but I need all the help I can get, so I'm certainly be willing to, be willing to get all the help I can.
So, on the Emerald, I don't see, I have a couple things I have to, one of the checks with you is, on the Emerald Ash Bor trap, are those going to be the purple traps that you get?
Those are the purple traps, yes.
So you might want to tell people what they look like, because, you know, that was one of the questions.
We're only going to be putting out a few, not nearly as many as what they've done before. It's just basically where they're going to be hanging up in ash trees, and I'm not even exactly where when the foreneer wants me to come back and pull those and start looking at them, but I guess it'll be sometime later on in the summer. And so, but yeah, it's just a purple little, purple little rectangular type box of the up in several ash trees here. We're trying to find some inconspicuous areas to where they don't, you know, they don't grow legs and walk away, if you know what I mean. But, yeah, there's, there'll be several of them out there. So, if you go back behind the Coombs Center, up there on what we call Mount Newman, where John and I have always had our old races, one up the hill, we'll be putting one back up there, because I do believe we've had the Emerald Ash Bor back there, and a little group in the ash trees there around the dumpsters. And so, that's one place I definitely want to make sure we have one of the traps.
So, if the Emerald Ash Bor's were, would you?
As far as I'm concerned, it is, but the state has not officially deemed it yet. If you look on the latest maps, Washington, Smith County still show as being non-occupied, and that's why she's coming down here and set these traps.
So while you're here, you have a captive audience to tell them about the program for the Emerald Ash Bor, and about the treatment of trees, that they have trees, that they would like to have treated. Would you like to take advantage of that?
What it is, is there are, fortunately, you can inoculate your ash trees, and the Virginia Department of Forestry does have this program, and I can get you all the information out there, we'll have it available at Earth Day as well, where the state does need to come in and look at the trees, and basically approve the trees. And when you do have the trees treated, and submit all the proper documentation for it, they will be willing to pay up to fifty percent. And I think for a private landowner, it's like upwards of $2,500 per resident, and for a municipality, I think it's like up to $5,000.
So, but we've been doing this already.
We have been.
And you've been treating these on your Friday workday.
We've been treating trees.
And how much do those cost when you do that?
Well, the trees that I, the last treatments that were done, where we brought in Bartlett and did the injection, because what they now say is that if ash trees over twenty inches in diameter, the best thing to do for translocation of those materials is to do this, where you have to drill into the tree, and inject this material called envenzalit. We did seven trees here in town, and the total cost was over $2,000.
So, so seven trees, that's what, $200, $300 a tree?
Something, something. And I'm sure, was because, you know, because we had a number of trees to do, a number of large trees was a fair amount of volume, we probably got a decent, got a decent rate on that, versus them having to come all the way up from Johnson City. And I do have to tell you, right now, Bartlett is still the only licensed contractor to do that kind of treatment, especially for the large trees. If you have a small ash tree in your yard, you can still do the amidicloprid solvrench around there. Anything, what they, what the latest research says, anything over twenty inches in diameter, it's best to do the injection.
Is that an aeration, is that the aeration injection thing that we did down at the?
What they now recommend is just clear out around the base of the tree.
But not the root, but not the root.
No, what they say is do it right around the base of the tree, that's one of the things, and basically just mix it, mix up the amidicloprid, which you can get just about anywhere. I was going to say Southern States, but I can't do it.
You can say it, you wouldn't be right.
You go down to Bristol. And, or you can get down here to Lowe's, and get the material, and just mix it according to label recommendations, and you can apply it yourself, and of course, that's, and, you know, so that makes it very reasonable. But like I said, when the trees get large, you know, that's where, you know, you do run the risk of not getting it translocated well enough through the tree to where you feel like you've got proper coverage. So that's why they recommend.
So, it's good, I was on the Tree Commission when we did Phase One, and I'm glad to see Phase Five is now going, is coming about. Will we go back to start Phase One? We, will Six start back before One?
We will start back at One.
Which that was, which that was country club, that was right.
Country club.
And that happened right after the, or not too long after.
Not long after the tornado, yes, sir.
Very good.
So, like I said, what the Tree Commission will do is, we're just going to tweak it and see what we can maybe do to make it, to make it even more attractive than what it is.
Council, any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Just a comment. He was, he was actually working on that orchard last Friday in the rain.
Yeah, I was getting, I was getting general harassment from across the railroad track.
Well, thank you, Kelly. I know you, I know you do. For being on that committee, standing on that committee, you do a lot with so little as you're raised. We very, very much appreciate.
Well, I tell you what, to have the support of town council means a tremendous amount. I'm indebted to all of you guys, especially those of you who have served with me on, and I say with me, on the Tree Commission, especially you, Mr. Howard, you, Mr. Humphreys. You know, I appreciate everything y'all've done. I'm glad Ms. Patterson's with me now and I think we've got.
My mother, my mother was with me.
Oh, yes. And I even have a couple of old pre-commission members actually.
Are you calling her old? Are you calling my mother old?
No, I'm calling her late old.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So, but anyway, but, but it's, I can tell you that this is a unique place. And not every community in the town, in the State of Virginia has the, has the support to their urban tree program like, like this community has. I get to see that all the time with my, with my compatriots whenever we get together. And so, I, once again, I'm indebted to you guys. And I appreciate y'all very.
Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Everybody hold on to their hats. Number three, and reports with town manager, is the update on the 2018-2019 budget, which we have already spent how many hours on? Close to 40 hours on?
It's, it's been an extended period of time. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, members of the public, there have been four public, publicly open work sessions that councils had the pleasure to work through with each of the department heads and other members of the town staff and myself in moving forward to reach a balanced budget. And with, couldn't, couldn't be possible without Mr. Banner back there, the treasurer and the director of finance for getting all the numbers to be plugged in and to arrive at a balanced figure. When Chuck arrived at that balanced figure, he had a big smile on his face, is all I can say. But.
I would not doubt it.
So, what, what the process is from, from here on out is council was presented with a draft electronic copy of the budget last Friday. And by law, you're supposed to have had that by April 1st, which you did. And the next thing that will happen is it will be reduced into a booklet format with the budget message probably around the 15th of this month. It will get advertised. Ms. Kingsley will see that the budget ordinance gets advertised for public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance at the upcoming May council meeting. So, I encourage anybody from the public who has questions about the budget for the upcoming fiscal year to come to that meeting and, and ask any questions that you might have during the public hearing process. Once the council adopts it, which would be, final adoption would be at the June meeting to go into effect for July 1. It will be placed on the website at that point in time. Right now, by law, it is a draft document, which means it is subject to the, to change by the council. Provided you do not exceed 1% in deviation, only one public hearing is required. If you deviate more than 1% in any changes that you make, we'll have to reschedule and have another public hearing in that regard. But my hope is it's, it's a reduced budget from prior year, which is, is good. And my hope is that everything should go fairly smoothly and the budget will get adopted to be in effect for the next council on July 1.
So, Mr. Kelly, I asked, my question would be, when do you expect that, are you, are you, will you post that prior to our, as just a, a working copy or, or put it on the, our website? Or tell me what you're planning for that?
We, we, we can publish, we can put the draft on there. I, we prefer to wait until I have the budget message. Because I think if people will read the, the message, rather than, what'd we decide, 150-some pages, Chuck?
Hold on, hold on. Bob Howard has a copy of it right now.
If you read the budget message, you should be able to pick out the, the finer things that would be of greater public interest that, that are in, in the budget. So, so that should be around the middle of the month. And I can ask the IT people to put it on the website at that point in time. But keep in mind, it's a draft at that point in time. Nothing has been adopted. And only after the budget is adopted will it be in final format on the website.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Council, any, any, council people, any questions for Greg?
Moving along, is, are you going to do this or?
Okay.
Is consideration of adoption of the October 1, 2003 bylaws through the Architectural Review Board, now the Historic Preservation Review Board. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, in going through some of the old files as people have left employment here with the town, I believe Ms. Eisenhower was able to discover that bylaws were recommended to be changed by the Board of Architectural Review. And they actually voted to make those changes on October 1, 2003. It went to council for discussion, but council never accepted those bylaws at that time. So, what I think needs to happen here, simply because you all are just now seeing something for the first time that actually took place 15 years ago, is to refer it back to the Board of Architectural Review for them to review these, to make sure that they're still accurate. And then for it to come back to council at a later point in time to adopt any amendments to, to the bylaws. But, once we discovered them, we felt like, we felt strongly enough that the Board of Architectural Review wanted them changed. So, we should at least bring it to the council's attention.
And since I'm on that board as well, I'm going to go ahead and say that we certainly need to look at this before we can make any decision. So, I thank you very much for recommending that, Mr. Kelly.
So, no, no action is, needs to be taken by the council. We can just simply have that put on an agenda for an upcoming Historic Preservation Review Board.
Would you, do you have the names of who was on that board at the time? When that was, when that, when that was?
Thank you for giving me this packet of information.
Yes, it was, it was Betsy White, Tom Phillips, Doris Schuman, Andy Hargrove, and Charlie Day.
Very good. Then a few years. Okay, that doesn't need to be in form of motion, does it, Mr. Kelly?
No.
All righty.
Just their information.
All right. Everybody, everybody agree with that? Wayne, Cindy?
Yes.
All right, very good. Back to them it goes. All right, we now to resolutions. And, and I've asked Mr. Craig to read the first resolution. And this resolution is to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture for the purpose of a vehicle for the Abingdon Police Department. Before you read that, Wayne, if we could let Greg, Wayne?
Yeah, I'm not reading it. I'm cool.
I thought you were. I didn't have my glasses on, Wayne. I didn't have my glasses on, Wayne, like you always claim.
I'm big enough for you to see, Rick.
All right, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, this is a, this is a grant opportunity that we've, we've had success with in the past. We were able to get a couple of cars in, in the past from USDA Rural Development. And so, we, we applied for an additional automobile this year. The way the grant works is that if you're awarded the grant, as long as you have budgeted for the purchase of one police car within your budget, they will provide an additional police car for free. So, we do, we currently actually have two police cars budgeted for purchase in the upcoming budget. And we were actually awarded this as we were working through one of our budget work sessions. We didn't have it and, and we don't actually have it listed in the budget. But it is one that will take place not in the current fiscal year, but it will go into, Chief Sullivan will make the order for the car in the upcoming fiscal year with your new budget after July 1. But part of the process is necessary for council to enact the resolution in order for me to proceed with the remaining documentations that have to be filed in order to process that grant. So, even though you're adopting the resolution today, nothing's going to happen on this until next fiscal year.
All right. Mr. Craig, would you please read that resolution?
The resolution is as follows. Be it resolved that in order to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States of America, United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, parentheses, the government, to provide funding for the purchase of police vehicles and equipment, the council does hereby adopt and abide by the covenants contained in the agreements, documents, and forms required by the government, government to be executed. Be it further resolved that Gregory W. Kelly, town manager, be authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Abingdon the above referenced agreements and to execute such other documents, including but not limited to debt instruments and security instruments as may be required in obtaining the said financial assistance. This resolution, along with a copy of the, any required, any documents, is hereby entered into permanent meetings of this meeting of the town, of the council for the Town of Abingdon.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. What's your pleasure, council?
I'm with the adoption of the resolution.
I see. Any discussions?
That one?
No, we're going to get a free car.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Kingsley, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humph. Aye. And we're going to go now for the resolution to approve financing terms with Highland Union Bank for the lease purchase of a new refuge truck. Mr., Chuck, I think you got, you have that, don't you?
I, I can, I can lead us into it. But Chuck, if you have, have specific questions, you might want to direct them to, to Ms. Mayor. However, however you want to do it, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I can give you a little bit of background on how we got to this point. We went out for basically check rates of financial institutions on the purchase for recycling truck, which was in the budget. We had the payments authorized in the budget. We went out, sent out to at least six institutions, got responses from three of them. One of them was VML Baco Finance, which in turn bid it out to local banks. They were the lowest rate that we got back. And the resolution that we got from them recommends, I recommend that we, you know, go with the, the bank, the financial institution that they recommend, which is, I think, is 2.9%. So, it's a five-year loan, 129, 129, I believe, was the amount. And that will be payable towards the first payment. We will make this, this current fiscal year because it is in the budget.
One, one thousand two.
Where they got, they've got, they've got enough charge of, they've got a origina, oh, originated fee charge that's been within there. So, it was a little difficult to get to the exact what they were charging. But we, we, they still came in as the law was dead.
And it is with one of the local banks, Highland Union Bank. So, it's a good thing.
Any questions?
May I have a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Kelly, could you tell us exactly, I know it's been a while since we talked about this, what this truck's going to be used for? Could you give the public, just for the record, what we're going to be using this truck for?
Yes, this is, this is a brush truck. We, we currently, brush trucks are probably the most utilized trucks that we have in town. They pick up the.
This is the recycling truck.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, but thank you, Chuck. We decided last year that we would start doing our own recycling pickup. And as a result, we had to acquire a special truck to be able to do that. So, this is, this is that vehicle that we will begin picking up. The town will be picking up the actual recyclables. We will be purchasing bins if, if we haven't already got those in the process. And those will be given out to the residents. And so, instead of the current contractor who picks that up, we'll be picking it up and taking it off to the recycling locations first. We found it to be more cost-effective over the, over the long haul based on what we're paying under the existing contract.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Sorry I missed that up. We're buying some new trucks.
All right. And, and Ms. Patterson, would you please read that resolution?
Certainly. Yes. And it's as follows. Be it therefore resolved as follows. The town hereby determines the finance to, the project through Highland Union Bank in accordance with the proposal date dated of March 12, 2018. The amount financed shall not exceed $133,000. The annual interest rate in the absence of default or charge and tax status shall not exceed 2.95%. And the financing terms shall not exceed five years from closing. All finance contracts and all related documents for the closing of the financing, the financing documents shall be consistent with the foregoing terms. All officers and employees of the town are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver any financing documents and to take all such further action as they may consider necessary or desirable to carry out financing of the project as contemplated by the proposal and this, and this resolution. Finance director is hereby authorized and directed to hold executed copies of the financing department until the conditions for the delivery of the financing documents have been completed to such officer's satisfaction. The finance director is authorized to approve changes to the, any financing documents previously signed by town officers or employees, provided that such changes shall not substantially alter the intent of such documents or certificates from the intent expressed in the forms executed by such officers. The financing department shall be in such final forms as the financing director shall approve with the finance director's release of any financing document for delivery constituting conclusive evidence of such officer's final approval of the document's final form. The town shall not take or omit to take any action, the top, the taking or omission of which shall cause its interest payments on this financing to be includeable in the gross income for federal income tax purposes of the registered owners of the interest payment obligations. The town hereby designates its obligations to make principal and interest payments under the financing documents as qualified tax exempt obligations for the purpose of Internal Revenue Code Section 265B3. The town intends that the adoption of this resolution will be a declaration of the town's official intent to reimburse expenditures for the project that is to be financed from the proceeds of Highland Union Bank financing described above. The town intends that funds that have been advanced or that may be advanced from the town's general fund or any other town fund related to the project for project's cost, costs may be reimbursed from the financing proceeds. All prior actions of town officers in furtherance of the, of the purposes of this resolution are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. All others, all other resolutions or parts thereof in conflict with this resolution are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And I'm glad y'all didn't have to read that.
Thank you all. And thank you, Ms. Patterson, for making that crystal clear to all of us.
You're welcome. Say that real fast, you know, five seconds, okay?
So, council, what is your pleasure on this?
I move with the option of the resolution.
Second. There's a, there's a motion and a second. Do we have any other further discussion? Call for the, well, not call for questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Hi.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humph.
Aye. All righty. Okay. And we go to old business. And if, if Town Attorney Deb Eisenhower will come forward. And this is the discussion, as you remember last meeting, the discussion regarding the acceptance of property located at 507 Butt Street via assignment of the note and deed of trust to satisfy real estate taxes and blight abatements.
Here's your fund tax. If you'll remember, last month, we talked some about this very same issue, but we'll go over, the, the first page here is just a synopsis, pretty much a summary of what we found. Um, also included, um, a couple of quotes for things that we would possibly have to do to the property, and the bulk of your handout is, uh, something I'm sharing with you from the police chief, and it is all the responsibilities that happen when a municipality ends up with a drug manufacturing cleanup. So, that one, while we're pretty much estimating what the costs are, we'll start at the top, and if you'll recall, it deals with an offer of an assignment of note and deed of trust from Pearl Eads, now deceased, and Doris Harrell with, uh, B&amp;H Lending Company regarding property located at 507 Butt Street. The legal department's been in touch with Ms. Eads' attorney, Philip Harrell, and presented to you at the March meeting, um, we're now going to present you with the choice of accepting or denying, we, we think, or discussing and deciding upon, the note, the deed of trust, or to deny same. The immediate monetary reality of accepting it is as follows, and you notice that, Ms. Patterson, I used a little bit of color in this one, not a lot, but the green means, the green means we're to the, um, that's, that's what we could expect. Um, now, that's pretty much cutting to the chase, but the county assessed value of the real estate alone is 25,000. It's five lots, but they're very long and narrow lots. It's, uh, lots 15 through 20 of the Haney, the Haney addition. And against that 25,000, and I will tell you momentarily why I'm leaving the 88,000 for the, for the structure or improvement off of that estimate. The Town has already owed delinquent real estate tax, if you'll go all the way over as of the end of May, it will be $2,021.80. Leans for abatement total 43514. Tree trimming and mowing is at about 450. Those are all debts owed. We also count into this amount the county delinquent real estate taxes, which are 7,83623. We also have inside your packet, two estimates that are, one is es- is asbestos removal and disposal, which is $1,500, and actual demolition of the structure and disposal of same, which is 21,45774. So, if you do the math, and even I could do that math, you're already over $25,000. As a matter of fact, Ms. Patterson, I've got the 864 in red, you got that one.
Got it.
And, um, then we added to the end, the possibility of cleanup fees for hazardous substances, more or less $10,000, and cleaners, antifungicides, because there is a tremendous amount of mold in the structure, hazmat protective gear, paint supplies, and a lot of labor at about 25. Recommendations of the Town's legal, from the Town's Legal Department with these types of considerations would be, there, we have plenty of unknown dangers and risks involved in owning the property. We would suggest that taking on the responsibility of owning the property would be too risky and would immediately consume an inordinate amount of resources and labor, materials, time, and hiring out specialty jobs and expertise.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
Any questions?
I've got a comment.
Go ahead.
I, I think that the council really should not even give any consideration to this at all, because it is nothing more than a liability that we would be assuming. Um, we would be taking on some, someone else's property, and we're not even gonna own this property, we're just gonna be the asseny of a deed of trust, and, um, you know, then you have to sell the property and pay off all the liens, and to me, it's just a nightmare, and I think that the existing trustee ought to be the one that handles this, or that it ought to be sold for delinquent taxes, which I think it's probably on the delinquent tax list right now. I just see no rational reason for the Town of Abingdon to be involved in this.
The delinquent chief, the state chief.
No, they will, they'll sell it on the set.
How quickly will they sell this? I mean, it takes, it gets long and drawn out sometimes, but I mean.
It has to be delinquent for three years, and I'm, is it?
On the roll.
It's on the roll now, it's just a matter of when Washington County would get around to actually doing that. Ms. Kingsley just informed me that, um, there's also a problem with locating the heirs to the property, and they have to be given notification when that process, um, begins.
That's all the, the reason that it takes a while.
So, this might be a good deal, someone, if that someone isn't us, so. Is what it sounds like to, I was, I don't know if I'm hearing you all right, but, uh, it sounds kinda like, so, there's nothing, there's no, there's nothing we need to do with this, except just move along, is this correct?
Um, I, I would.
That's his recommendation, huh?
Yeah, I would, I would assume that, uh, Ms. Eisenhower would just send a letter back to him and say, "Thanks, but no thanks."
Do you wanna make this in form of, somebody wanna make it in form of, do we need to make a form of a motion, or just a consensus?
I mean, just to clarify things, I mean, if you wanted to make a motion that, uh, the Town of Abingdon does not desire to, um, acquire the assignment of the deed of trust.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Kelly, based on your recommendation, and I feel the same way.
One second. Okay. Any other further discussion?
The, the only thing I could, I could see when it was first presented was, uh, it is adjacent to the new, uh, urban pathway, and I thought that might be a good spot for maybe a future part, but with, with everything else here, it's probably not a good deal for us. I would concur with what's been said there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. Any, any further discussion? Ms. Kingsley, roll call, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphrey.
Aye. And we're down to council members, council members' reports. Mr. Craig?
Well, I'm gonna be brief. Uh, the BVU, uh, Sunset Deal is, uh, is, has another strange twist. Sunset, uh, has a new financial partner, and, uh, is supposed to move along quickly, but we've heard that for two years, so, uh, I don't know what's happening, except for we've got a new financial partner, so. That's the only report I've got.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have anything except my usual, you know, and what I need to do for the council and for the Town, and I thank everybody for coming tonight and being interested in this lovely town of ours. I appreciate everybody coming here. Wish everybody well.
Okay, very good. Mr. Howard?
Just that, you'll get down to announcements there later on, but there's a lot of things the Town is, is doing the next, is in the next, basically in April.
Yeah.
A lot of, so that's kinda neat.
Yeah, okay, I'll announce, I'll announce, so. What did I ask you to remind me of? I can't remember what it was now. I'm gonna start telling Wayne Craig, Wayne will tell me.
Yeah, I'll remember.
Alright.
Uh, I'll think of it.
Okay, so if y'all, and, and so, we're, here's what we're down to, uh, council. We're down to appointments for boards and committees. Uh, I think we can end this up fairly quickly if you all wish to, and that is, it looks like there's the Abingdon Tree Commission, we have reappointments of people who are eligible to serve, Tourism Advisory, which is just an, uh, is just a changeover from where Suzanne Lay is retiring, and her, uh, executive vice president, Anita Farmer, would take the place. We can take care of those fairly easily, it would keep us from having to go into closed session, and we could, uh, and we could finalize this if you would like to.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Alrighty, very good. So, do I have, under the Abingdon Tree Commission, do I have any, we, we have the reappointment of Kathleen Wild, who is eligible for to serve another term, and reappointment for Ryan Monahan, who's eligible to serve another term, both that Ms. Patterson has served with. Uh, would you like to, would you like to?
Sure, I'd like to recommend them and reappoint them, um, on, back on the board for the Abingdon Tree Commission, um, Ms. Kathleen Wild and, uh, Mr. Ryan Monahan, please.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion on this? Okay, roll call. Ms. Kingsley, please.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphrey.
Aye. And moving along to the Tourism Advisory Commission, as you know, Suzanne Lay has retired. This is just replacing her spot, which we have a Worcester County Chairman of Co- uh, Commerce spot that's on the Tourism Commission, it'd be moving Anita Farmer, uh, to, uh, whose executive vice president to, to, uh, fill the term. Uh, this is not, uh, this is just to fill the term of Suzanne Lay's term, it's not a beginning term. Uh, is there a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make that form of a motion that we appoint, uh, Anita Farmer to this position to fill, uh, the expired term of Suzanne Lay.
And then, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any, is there any discussion on this? And if you would, Ms. Kingsley, roll call.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphrey.
Aye. And Mr. Kelly reminded me what I wanted to ask, because I've only warned, warned everybody out with this thing, and that is the Wataga Project. So, tell us about the Wataga Project. Mr. Kelly, what's happened with that?
The Wataga Project is the Virginia Creeper Trail Project for the construction of a restaurant facility and parking area at Wataga, and it's been held up in red tape for quite some time with various governmental entities. Um, I was advised last week that it has finally been approved by Washington County, and we are only awaiting the approval, um, from VDOT to issue the notice to advertise the bid, and the bid documents are ready to roll. So, I will, I will, once that happens, I'll send council a, uh, email to that effect to let you know that it's, um, taking place.
Very good. Uh, just for, for public record, how many, Matt, uh, maybe I should ask you, how many parking places, additional parking places that'll provide?
Not, not right off. It's several plus horse trailer parking and things of that nature.
It's gonna be, it's much, uh, it's a much, uh, proven on what we have now. Um, do you, anybody remember how many acres it is down there?
Not, not right off, yeah, so.
So, I don't feel so bad missing that one a minute ago, not knowing.
Wasn't it around two acres, Matt?
It was a little more now, I think.
What was it?
Yeah. But anyway, so it's gonna be a very nice parking area, we're hoping it's gonna, it'll come into land, uh, around, uh, last September 1st to October, if I'm not mistaken, uh, if everything goes correctly. Matt, if everything goes correct?
This is Kevin, this is Kevin's project.
Oh, I'm sorry, Matt, dag gone it.
It's supposed to be done this year, everything.
Yeah, so it was, it was, uh, it was available to us Thanksgiving, so it's been since November that we haven't been able to do anything with this, and so it's, it's now we're gonna be able to get it rocking and rolling, hopefully, and, uh, and, and provide much needed parking space and safety, because you had to cross Wataga Road and people come rolling down through there, and, you know, I'm surprised that more people didn't get, I think, uh, a couple wrecks out that way, but, uh, no one got, as far as I know, killed or maimed.
Yeah, you're gonna see, you're gonna see quite a few projects take off here before long. Urban Pathway, Park Street, um, Wataga Project, all those projects.
Alright, and Floyd has flashed up so nicely for me, the announcement for April. On April, the best iPads application for developing content at the Virginia Highland Small Business Incubator is April the 4th. April 6th through 7th, the Mid-Atlantic Garden Fair, we all look forward to going to that. Uh, that's at the Southwest Virginia Higher Education Center. April 7th is the opening day for the farmer's market. All of that is this weekend, guys, and girls, and so that'll be, uh, fun stuff to do. April 13th through 16th, William King, uh, Museum, uh, Art in Bloom Exhibit, uh, I hope everybody's been looking across the street at William, at, uh, the Martha Washington Inn, that's doing the eight-foot by eight-foot, uh, painting over there, that is all part in conjunction with the Art in Bloom Exhibit. Uh, April 18th, Grants, how to find them, Virginia Highland Small Business Incubator. April 21st, uh, Ke- uh, Kevin's gone, but, uh, Earth Day, uh, Phil's Pen Lawn, I'm sure Cindy will be down there handing out some trees, is a member of that, uh, uh, group, and then April 21st, or excuse me, April 28th, Virginia Creeper Trail Fest, which will be held on, on A Street, and spill over up into, I guess A Street is all the way to the A Street Park, if I'm not mistaken, and last year was a wonderful success, and this year they're expecting it to be even bigger and better. Does anybody own? Go ahead, go ahead, Cindy.
Skip the Economic Development Authority.
Yeah, there was a appointment to that.
No, no, I thought we would skip that one.
Okay.
I mean, that was okay, 'cause that way it keeps from going into closed session. Is that okay with you all?
Yeah, it's good.
No, okay, I got you. Okay.
And, uh, April the 28th also is, um, dedication of the pavilion honoring Dr. French Moore, the pavilion next to the Finley House. Um, it's gonna be Saturday, April 28th, 300 Green Spring Road, and, uh, ceremony starts at 12:00 in the afternoon, and we'd appreciate it if whoever can, can come and join us to dedicate that to Dr. French Moore.
Uh, we're, we're hoping French is gonna be there, so be sure to come out so you can show him, uh, give him a little love, so.
There's a lot of, um, jams going on in town, too. I was trying to pull them up to show you guys, but, well, it's not working in here for me, but anyway.
Like the BlackBerry Jam?
There's all kinds of jams, musical jams going on, it's real busy, basically.
There is, they have, uh, I think it's Saras Sovedra, it's putting, putting together those events, January Jams, as well as the Thursday evening concert series, there's some great, uh, great groups coming through this year. Uh, take a little time for yourself, get out there and enjoy them. That being said, let me ask you a question before we go. So, we did not do the Economic Development Authority, shall we go back and vote on table that for next meeting? You think that would be cleaner?
Alright, I'll move we table the appointment of the, of a member to the Economic Development Authority.
You can all second that.
Any discussion, roll call, Ms. Kingsley.
Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphrey.
Aye. And with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Is it everyone to do?
I'll second.
Okay, move the second, all in favor, voice vote, aye.
Aye.
And I'll show everybody.